I'm going to call this meeting to order Tuesday, January 23rd. Wish it was July sometimes, 2024 at 6 o'clock. This is a special meeting and welcome, everybody. Roll call by recording secretary, please.
We have Teresa Gerdat Carter, Ryan Silvestri, Ted Strihaus, Judy Collin, and hopefully Andy will be on Zoom.
We'll see. Oh, no, I think she's gonna be just to say goodbye. She might be. Abby, you didn't know that Andy resigned?
Oh, no, I didn't. I'm sorry. Andy resigned.
Yeah, we were unhappy about that, but it happened right after last meeting. Okay, opening statement by chair. Everybody here has heard my spiel and they're always very respectful and polite, everybody here, so I won't do it. Consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda. Seeing that there are none, approval of minutes from November 29th, 2023. People want a chance to peruse those first?
Just to refresh my memory. I read them a couple of months ago.
Oh, these are the ones I did and they were very brief. I only wrote about the actual actions that we did.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the November 29th.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and now approval of minutes from December 4th. Which we had our own Abby Childs for, so we're very happy. Abby, I just had a couple little things. Number four, they were just like semantics. It's the teacher in me. One acre zoning at the end of number four, last bullet. This is, it just missing a C, acre. One eighth acre zoning. And I have one other thing, too. It became evident. Oh, no, I think it was number six. Just it's meetings instead of meeting. There was like several meetings on number six and that was it. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Was there anything else on December 4th?
I don't think we did a motion for this yet.
No, we haven't. Oh, we haven't. We're discussing without a motion. Okay.
Yep. I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 4th.
I'll second that. Gotta repeat it. Okay. Is there any more discussion? Is there any discussion about the minutes on December 4th? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, and lastly, the minutes from January 4th. That Judy was nice enough to take for us.
Well, I have to say, I did not have the motion for the public hearing to adjourn. Don't know if anybody recalls who did that.
You wrote Ryan second. Oh, you don't, you said Judy motion to adjourn, Ryan second. Motion passed.
No, that was the first meeting.
Oh, the public hearing?
The public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Do we, does anybody remember?
I don't, I remember it just, we ended early. We had to wait.
Yeah, we had to wait. I've learned my lesson about that.
Well, I'm gonna guess it might have been Ryan and Terry because Andy was on there and I was taking the notes and Ted wasn't here.
I'm fine with that. Are you fine with that, Ryan?
I think, I didn't write it down, but I think it was Ryan then Terry second.
Oh, okay. If you remember it that way.
I said, I think.
Okay, okay.
Meeting today.
Meeting today.
The only, my last name spelled S I L, not S Y M.
Oh, up in the top.
Can you say that again?
Correction on Ryan's spelling of his last name in the roll call.
Yeah, both sections.
I just made that up, Ryan.
Hey, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January 4th. We didn't do that yet, right?
No.
No, there's no motion.
I'll second. Is there any other discussion about January 4th meeting on minutes? It was a lot, public hearing and then the regular meeting, which adjourned at 8:35. Hey, hearing that there are none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from January 4th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, moving on. Comments from citizens. Hi, Noah. How are you?
Do you want to put the mic towards the microphone?
What, the mic near Judy?
Me?
Mr. Allen, come on. Nothing? Okay.
Ooh, sorry about that.
You got anything? Okay. We're glad you're here. Definitely. Okay, number seven, modernization of the Ludlow Village zoning and flood hazard regulations. Village trustees, public hearing, public hearing with village trustees. Yeah, I kind of forgot to, we will discuss that, but this is gonna be about another hearing here. Chris Callahan's changes. Hi, Chris. So glad you're here.
Good to be here.
Okay, I think we're gonna take it away. We started at noise, right? Martha, do you want me to share my screen on village zoning or did you want to do it? Martha, would you prefer to do it?
I can do, I can do it if you want.
Yeah, can you do it since you're keeping the final record?
Okay, um, hang on.
Most people have to wait for me to get on Zoom. I'm not even on Zoom yet. Did you hear that Martha's gonna do it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I made it go.
Okay, this is what you sent out with your agenda, so that's the version I've got here.
Okay, can you go to the noise section? What is it? Actually, section 224 first. Section 224, because we fixed the bottom of it, but we didn't, the paragraph before that, we didn't fix. And it said the same thing that we corrected in the bottom paragraph.
Okay, here's 224.
Okay, so I included that here because we don't find it online, too.
What are we looking at on this?
We're looking at the first paragraph. Wait a minute.
For permitted use, that?
It's just something I noticed when I was, you know, reviewing the, what we did that night, that we had changed the bottom part, but not the top part of it.
You have to allow two years for conditional use of site plan?
No, the thing is, I'm 224, Chris, what do I mean? Thing on 224 that talked about how if they don't do anything within a year, then their permit's gonna be null and void. And you brought up that state statute that said we can't say that, but it still says that in the first paragraph.
That shall commence within one year. It doesn't say it will expire after one year.
Okay, so I guess that's, that's me overreacting to that then. Okay, so we can move on to section, oh, yeah, we're gonna revisit multi-unit dwellings in the, in the Village R2.
What section?
Village RC.
Is that, what section are we in?
We're in section 400, let's see. We're in zoning. Is that like 415? Article 5? No, Article 3.
400?
Yeah, we're gonna revisit multi-unit dwellings because we've had discussions with the people from Regional and with Rose and with Chris Callahan. And what we did last month was not paying attention to what they were actually trying to accomplish, the Vermont Legislature. So I want us to consider, and actually Ryan asked me to put it in the agenda for this month as well, this meeting as well. So I want us to talk about that and possibly reconsider that. What Chris Callahan suggested to me as a way that towns could maybe fight for not doing that because it may not fit for your town, which I'm not sure fits for our town, but it's not in, it's not really germane to what the state legislature wanted, legislature wanted us to accomplish to that statute. So I think it's a decision we should reverse.
Yeah, we'd like to hear Chris's opinion and Regional's opinion. And at the end of the day, we have to go for state statute. So I'm gonna leave it to them to interpret the state statute and who wants to hear from us.
Rose or Chris, did you want to speak to this issue?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, Terry, if you'd like me to.
Yeah, please, Chris.
Yeah, this is Chris Callahan. Yeah, I agree with what Terry has said and what Martha has said. And, you know, the way we looked at this thing was, it's not brilliant planning, it's not brilliant zoning, but what it is, is a response to a housing, perceived housing crisis that we need more affordable housing and that housing is expensive. And the legislature basically overrode zoning and said, we're gonna allow multi-unit dwellings where single families are now allowed. And the statute, although is somewhat ambiguous and you could fight it if you really wanted to, but it's clear that the intent of the legislature is to provide housing in smaller districts and also the perception is that a single-family homes or two-family is somewhat discriminatory in allowing three and four, they specifically said, should be a permitted use with the same dimensions as a single-family dwelling. So there's that. And, you know, I just pointed out at one point that the language is ambiguous and if your goal was to fight this, then yeah, okay, we've got some arguments, but that's not what the intent was. And then beyond that, I have spoken to Martha. You folks have a grant to basically address affordable housing in the town and it really meshes with what the legislature is trying to accomplish. So rather than being the only one out there trying to fight this thing, I suggest that at least in the short run, you go along with it and comply with what the statute apparently
Rose, do you want to weigh in on it?
When we were talking at the last meeting, I did go and do a lot of research on it. And as Chris said, there, there are ambiguous language and there are ways to fight it. And I don't think that, that we were, we were acting in bad faith to look into it at all with the grant. I think that we started the grant period a very long time ago and this came recently to us, you know, in the last six months or so. And I think that three, four, and five units on small lots might seem a lot to us with our fire department and with, you know, the parking that we do not have in the village. But if everybody is on board, then I'm not going to fight it.
Yeah. Terry, let me, let me back up Rose, too, on this. I mean, from her perspective, from a planning perspective.
They, no, they do not. So that's an incentive for not picking up.
Why they haven't hooked up.
Okay, so Martha, do you hear that change that we're gonna move those dwellings that are four or fewer to our permitted use columns? In all our districts? Okay. The next part. I'm looking at the, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Rose. Go ahead, Rose.
Oh, Anna, the one that I'm looking at on my screen here, Ludlow Preservation District, it does have multi-unit dwellings, number seven, five plus units.
And you're saying four or fewer? Yeah. Four or fewer is what the state statute says. The five or more has to be conditional. What? What are you doing with the five plus? Conditional. That stays unconditional.
Yeah.
The state statute just says four or fewer. Okay, thank you. Yep. Okay, the next part that I put in there, the Village RC discussion, that, that was something Rose and I talked about, but what just happened, we're not gonna go there. And also with the Village R2 discussion of possible change, since we had to have this extra meeting, I just wanted to bring up one more time if we think it's a good idea to put more things into Village R2, like Thompson Avenue, Orion Avenue, places like that, our little section of suburbs where it may not be appropriate to have huge apartment houses or even room for them. But, you know, if people don't want to do that, we can move on. That's why I, that's why I warned the map and the discussion about it. What do people think about that? You used to live there.
I would say, I would say no. I did. I grew up my whole life there. I don't see that being a very good situation for, for this.
Wait, I don't understand. I don't think it's a good situation for, to put it into Village R2.
Yeah, to put more units up there.
I'll get one more units in there. So you kind of, you're agreeing with what I'm saying then?
Yep.
Okay. Judy, how do you feel about it? I know Martha.
So wait, they are currently Village.
They're currently Village R.
Residential.
Yes.
So why would you change that?
Because there are little sort of suburbs up there. They have all those little ranch houses. The lots are very small already. And I thought that was another area, like Andrews, Andover Street. I mean, we looked at Andrews, Andover Street and what naturally happened there, according to settlement patterns, it ended up being almost all residential except for Tony's service station. So I was just looking at other areas in town that would also fit our description on Village R2, which would, we would just reserve that for residential buildings and not, you know, and not all the other things that are in Village R. Like we did when we looked at Andover Street.
Okay.
I know a couple of meetings ago, I sent that comparison between Village R and Village R2, which I'll make sure I include when we go to the trustees with that information so they can see the difference. Okay, I had Ted weigh in. Ryan, what do you think?
I don't, what else is available, what else is available in Village R? So it's really just the apartment, like multi-unit buildings? So you're trying?
No, that's everywhere. That's gonna be permitted now.
Okay.
But things we took out were, I gotta find my comparison chart. Or we can just look at the two zoning areas here. Okay, so in the Village R2 district that we created.
What section would that be?
We proposed it. We had a, we created it to propose to them.
No, so I, yeah, I know it's in the, the R2, but was I just, the difference?
Okay, so here's what's allowed in the Village Residential. Single unit dwelling, two-unit dwelling, multi-unit, four or less unit dwelling, accessory use or structure, accessory dwelling unit, home occupations, childcare home, public recreation area, and nursery. Those are all permitted uses. And then the conditional uses are childcare facility, adult daycare center, outdoor recreational use, parking area, multi-unit dwelling, five plus units. Oh, that's in there anyway.
See, I think.
But under conditions.
I think that has less protection than just the Village Residential.
Oh, no, we took out a whole bunch of stuff. I sent you guys that chart.
So the, so what, what she was just reading was the Village Res, Residential, right?
No, I was reading Village R2. Excuse me. Is this a meeting? It's a meeting, yes, sir.
This, this is the plan.
No, it's not. No, that's, that's new New Hampshire primary. Our primary is later in the year.
Ours is in August.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
You didn't bother us at all.
It's all over the news.
Glad you came to vote.
I'm wondering if you're thinking of the 31st.
They're all voting today.
Okay, thank you. So what are people thinking about that?
But can you tell me what section it's in? I need to look at it.
Yeah, I wish I brought my comparison charts, but I can look back and forth.
That's okay. I've got Village Residential.
So, yeah, can you pull up Village Residential?
I've got it up.
Martha, can you pull up Village Residential for us? And I'll pick up, put up, put up Village R2 online and see what the difference is.
My, my whole thing with that is when you start, and I, and I challenge with this, my job is, so you start Thompson, Orion, how far down High Street do you go? Are you going across the street now to, to that other?
My idea was if your address is Orion or Thompson, it would affect you and nobody else.
Okay.
Because I actually talked to Chris Callahan about this and he said, probably don't bring that up because then you have to talk about boundaries and everything else, so.
Well, well, yeah, I mean.
If you want to pass on it, we can pass on it. I'm fine with that.
I just, I think we're too late. I think we're too late to the, to the gun on this to start going down that if we're talking about going to public hearing with this, so.
Okay. So I got a yes from Ted, a yes from me, a note from Ryan. But we have to have three, so that's, that kills the issue. Okay, moving on. Motion, oh, wait, Martha, I want to make sure we touch base with you because you had a few things left, right? Before we move on to the next item on the agenda?
I don't recall.
I made some comments back in November, I think, on some of the changes that you had made. I'd have to pull those up. Oh, and I think you made some changes to the signage where it didn't necessarily make sense to me. But I, again, I can look for that email if you want. Are you done with all your other stuff?
No, we're not done. I, I'm jumping the gun here because we didn't finish everything that Chris sent to us to do. So we were taking a look at, could you pull up, we'll get right back to that, Martha, but can you pull up section 550 for us?
Yeah, just a sec.
Thank you.
Terry?
Yep.
I wanted to mention that we, we realize now that our flood hazard regulations in the village certainly need updating. I don't know if you guys want to look at that now or if you want to in, in hold off on this or if you want to do something later on. Now is probably better than later. But one of the issues that we discovered was out of date were the, the anchoring and flotation of the storage tanks, gas, gas storage tanks. We've discovered that the gas propane tank fillers, like suburban propane, suburban propane will not fill the gas tanks if they are above base flood elevation because they are too high. And so looking up the federal FEMA rules, they're different than what our rules say for the, for the flood hazard regulations. Maybe Jason knows a little bit different rules than I do because he is also part of our flood hazard help. But, so we, we need to look at our flood hazard regulations.
I know we do, Rose, but I think it's like a huge job to redo them right now and I want to put it off until after this round of, you know, finish up this grant and the public hearings and everything and then definitely address it because I'd like to have Marie Caduto come in and talk to our board. Is she, is she still in that position? Because she explained it so well and we can get up to date with all the new regs and the flood regulations that way, too.
Well, I don't know if she's the person, well, I don't, she doesn't work for Regional, does she?
No, she came from the state and explained to us all about repairian ways, repairian, I forget what they were called now.
Yeah, she never, Terry, she never came back. So that's the, that's the problem we had with her.
Well, let's, I don't, we don't have to use her, I just want the board to learn about it the way I learned about it because I need a refresher, too, on that whole thing. I do want to delve into that, but not right tonight and not before this public hearing because it's a lot and it's a huge document and it is old. It's like 2014 or something. And it does have to be reprinted.
Right. And we don't know who our new flood plain manager is going to be after this week.
And I did, I did call him and talk to him and he basically didn't have anything to say about it.
Well, and, and we also have on next month's agenda is setting goals for next, the new year, which we were gonna do this month, but that's okay.
Yeah.
And that's a good time to talk about what's the next piece of work we're gonna do when we're done this. And I agree with you, Rose. I think we really need to look at it, but I think that should be put in our goals.
Me, too. And I sent everybody a copy of Article 6 so they could at least look it over and see what we're talking about. Okay, so are we on 550? Thank you.
Noise.
Are we on 550 noise? Is that there? Okay. So Chris's suggestion is at the end of that noise chapter, after 550.8. To include this paragraph.
Point eight is LP gas.
After that, at the very end of it, before the next thing.
Camping trails or add something in?
Yeah, we're gonna, he want, he says this paragraph should be, he suggests that this paragraph should be added before 560 camping trailers. And the paragraph is individuals share a private right for recourse by filing a nuisance complaint with the police or the district court. He wants people to be able to use this document to show that you do have recourse if, you know, if you're living with.
Terry, this is Chris. Can I address that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. The reason we suggest that, there's actually an issue going on now in town where there's noises and issue. And it's kind of a private dispute among internal parties, yet they keep coming to the zoning board and the zoning, I mean, DRB and our prescriptive zoning regulations here talk about a certain number of decibels. I don't know what it is, 68, pick a number. It's in there. And I just thought it might be helpful, I'm not saying it's crucial, to add something to say, look, here's the zoning regulations, these are the numbers that they have to exceed. I'm not even sure we have a decibel meter, but you complainer always can go to court and talk to the judge and have them determine that it's a nuisance or not. And so actually I had suggested perhaps if they wanted, you put some language that says individuals have a private right to recourse by filing a noise complaint with the course, with the courts or the police. Hopefully they'll go to the court because the police is gonna say the same thing. Oh, okay. Maybe they can go knock on the door, but if it's a serious thing, then it probably won't be able to resolve in one night.
How do people feel about that, about that adding that language?
I think it's a good idea because people say, what are we gonna do? You know, it's, it's a.
Yeah, that's good.
You're good with that, right?
It has no teeth to it otherwise.
Sure. I mean, these. Sure, I mean, these are the same rights with, without this language in the zoning document, uh, complainant will still have these same rights anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add that information. Okay, we're good with that. Martha, you, did you get that paragraph?
Trying to get to a document that I can actually make notes on, revise.
Okay. I can send it to you, too. Mine was, I, I think I, I had a different word than Chris. I put nuisance instead of noise. But it should be noise, Chris?
No, you're right. I had nuisance. I just was, I couldn't read my writing.
I can send it to you, too, Martha, because I have it, I have it here verbatim. Okay, and we can talk about the next section, um, while she's, you know, doing that, which is section 590 and its own aircraft landing facilities in the village. And Chris is just, his question is why? Why do we need that?
Well, what about the emergency, um, Dart helicopter?
Is that why we need it?
Well, yeah, it can land down at the, the field at the school.
Okay.
I believe.
Did you hear that? The emergency Dart helicopter from Dartmouth is, like, can land down by the field at the school?
Yeah, that's fine. I just was curious as to why you'd put that in there, but that, that answers my question.
There you go.
Okay, so, yeah, Jason.
There's a couple places that it lands.
Yeah. Are they in the village?
Um, the, the school is one, um, and I believe out at Jackson Gore, um, the end of Renter Road is another one.
But those, that's not village.
On the question of why, um, the, the, um, transportation board a couple of years ago, maybe actually more than that, five, eight years ago, was really encouraging towns to include this in their zoning because, um, towns were struggling to have a, a meaningful, uh, level of input in proposals for aircraft facilities. Um, and on that point, there's exemptions in here and so emergency landing pads are exempt.
Okay.
This is for other stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, for fascination. Okay, and the last thing that we have from Chris is to take a look at those, um, definitions that we were needing and he had some ideas of adopting one or two of them, too. So I think I sent you guys those definitions. That we didn't have. We're part of the last. Okay, so one definition we were missing was secondary sign. And the one I sent you was, um, the one that Jason sent us, which is basically says a sign that gives you additional information about the business or commercial activity. Are we with that one?
I'm good with it.
Is that okay with it? Are you okay with that definition? So secondary sign, it was missing from our definitions. The next was, um, accessory dwelling. And I, from the state of Vermont, I took the one right from the state of Vermont. It says, um, it means a distinct unit that is clearly subordinate to a single-family dwelling and has facilities and provisions for independent living, including sleeping, food preparation, and sanitation. So I took that definition right from the state of Vermont. You okay with that one? That one's missing?
We, we have the state's definition in there.
You have the definition of accessory dwelling?
Yeah, it's right there.
This is the accessory dwelling.
Okay. I joined that down in our conversation. Maybe I misunderstood. And I think Martha, you also said we had additions and alterations in there?
You have alteration.
And I think you said additions was self-explanatory? Is that what you said?
I mean, I think so. I mean, I-
It says or addition to a building. Where it says alteration, it's right in the definition.
Okay, so it's within that definition. And then, um, another suggestion he had was at the end of, where is that? At the end of retail use, to add to the end of it, among other things. Because he, in his experience, actually, like, Chris, do you want to address that? On retail use to add at the end, among other things?
Yeah, I think that there's, yeah, and, and you might hear another s- side of this argument, but there are two sides of the argument. One is that if it's not specifically stated in something, you as a board might say, sorry, you can't have, uh, this kind of whatever their use is, some, something unusual would come up. And so you could exclude it. This gives you that flexibility from the permitting side on the DRB to say, yeah, this is very similar to the, whatever it is, a bookstore, a restaurant, uh, so yes, we're going to allow it. And that gives you that kind of flexibility. Uh, the other side of the thing is that people can come in all the time and argue, this is close to that. Your board may say, no, it's not. And then they could take it to the court and the court might say, yeah, and I think it is close to it. So there, there's the two sides that I've got. Maybe there's more to it, Martha, if you want to add, or Jason.
Yeah, um, this actually lists the things that are not allowed. So I think if you then add and other things, then that would be very confusing to not specify what they are.
Oh, you know, it, sorry about that. Yeah, I was thinking actually where I've seen it is in the list in the zoning districts. You know, when you have permitted uses, you would add, and, and that's where you would add it, not here. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood that.
Okay. I was just gonna say.
So what do you think about that, adding that there, Martha, under permitted uses, among other things?
Well, right now it says includes shops and stores for the retail sale of goods and services excluding, and then there's a list. So if it's not excluded, I mean, I would think that it's automatically included.
Right, you know, that's exactly right, Martha. That was my thinking because th- there you go. It's, it was a month or so ago I did this and now I'm remembering it. Yeah, so the same argument holds is if it's not specifically excluded, specifically excluded like it is here, then they have the argument saying, well, it doesn't say this.
Okay.
We're different. So that, I guess that's my argument on that one. I'm not saying one's right or wrong. It just, it's a matter of how you want to look at it.
I mean, it could be too, too broad if there's something that you actually want excluded that isn't listed here and someone comes in with an application, then, you know, you're out of luck.
That's what I mean.
Right.
Okay, so that, that's cleared up, I guess. I mean, I don't guess. Um, and the other thing, Chris, am I right when you said that you didn't find tourist home anywhere in the document and wondering if we needed that definition?
It is used.
It's, it's used but not defined? Is that what you're saying, Martha?
No, it's-
No, I think you said it was defined but not used.
It's both. It's both defined and used.
How about, no, the one I, the one I was looking at was transitional housing.
There it is.
Is there, yeah, you've got it. Okay, good. Yeah. Supportive services. Do you need to de- define supportive services? Or is that pretty well understood by everybody? I guess I'm asking Martha on that one.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of one of those things where and then when we define supportive services, well, we'll probably run across something else that also needs a definition. Um,
I mean, look at the state definition for supportive services.
Moment. It seems pretty self-explanatory to me.
What's in the text?
Yeah.
Does?
Yeah.
Right, I, I'm just, you know, having dealt with cute lawyers coming up with, oh, but that's a supportive service. You know, it just, a definition might make it a little more clear, that's all. But if there isn't one or if it's well-understood by everyone, then we can go with what's commonly understood.
How's the board feeling about that? Judy weighed in that she feels like it's pretty understandable.
I feel like it's, I'm, I can't, I can't think of an example where one heard, would be heard of, having that language.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're family-like. People know what it means by the transitional housing definition.
That's fine. I mean, as I told Terry, a lot of these things are just small, like little cleanup things. There was no huge earth-shaking changes.
Chris, that's the end of my notes from you. Did I miss anything?
Nope, that's where I ended, too.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep, Rose?
If we can go back to signs just for a second?
Yep.
What's the section number there?
Uh, I don't have it. Just something has come up and I just want to review it with everybody.
540.
The signs, yeah, the sign section. Um, as you, as you all know, we, we have a new restaurant in town. I don't, I forget the name of it. Um,
Little Mexico?
Yeah, there you go. Um, they have the neon string lights running around outside. And, um, I know that we don't allow the signs to do that. I just want to make sure that, um, it's in the regulations that we don't allow those, that neon outside either. In the regulations because it's also neon and it's, you know, like the LED shining.
Right. Same idea as generally.
Yeah, it's the type of, it's the type of, um, sign that attracts to the restaurant. It's outside. It's not in the window like some of the other ones. And I'm wondering what you guys think about that being, um, listed as a, a nuisance, a sign, um, and it's in our regulations now that it would be considered, um, you know, a problem. So I'm wondering what you think about if, if it's in the reg, the new regulations, I want to make sure it's in there. Excuse me.
Remember where it was?
It's 540. Point four, prohibited signs.
540.4.
Yeah, prohibited signs.
Has any lighting that is of such intensity or brilliance as to cause glare or to impair the vision of a driver of any motor vehicle or otherwise to interfere with the operation thereof? Is that where it would be?
Or could it be H not stable or securely affixed to the ground or substantial structure? Is it a permanent thing? Rose?
Permanent. It is permanent, yes.
We haven't deleted, I don't think, wait, now I see all these things where it's deleted.
Martha?
Oh, yeah, we haven't deleted anything. We just condensed the text.
All right. Thanks, because I can't, I'm not getting the whole thing. Yeah, thank you. So I'm trying to see here encroaches in the, um,
I, I, I haven't seen it, Rose. Can you just, how it looks again?
Oh, it's like it totally outlines the whole building, um, or for them, and it's like, um, LED neon, um, tubes on-
I think it's D. D is under D.
D says are internally illuminated, including but not limited to the following types of illuminated signs: neon signs, backlit signs, light box signs, halo lit channel signs, digital signs, marquee signs, or programmable LED signs.
Yeah, so it's not a, a sign. It, they're lights. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have, is, what, what does F say? You have to scroll down a little.
Rose, are you thinking of rope lights?
Yes, that's what it is, rope lights. Thank you.
Yeah.
Christmas lights. There are rope lights everywhere.
Yeah, but these are outside, not inside. A lot of those rope lights are inside and we don't, if they're inside the window, Ryan, we don't violate those.
Look at E. Maybe it's under E.
I would say it has the same effect whether it's inside the window or outside the window. No?
It's totally different.
I know.
E says contains, includes, or is illuminated by any flashing intermediate, intermittent, scrolling or moving lights, or contains or consists of streamers or spinners, or has any animated or moving parts. I would think it's, uh-
So I think what we're getting into is the temperature of the light itself or is it just all string lights?
They are. I'm sorry.
I think it falls under that.
Very, very bright. They're ve- they're extremely bright. Um, they're, they are kind of scrolling. You know, they're going very fast and they are, um, they are illuminated and they are scrolling at the same time.
Yeah.
So we're covered under E.
I think we might want to add something. I think, I think Martha, maybe you and I should talk. I think we want to add something.
So I'll just say if we're gonna, if we're gonna add something about lights, we're now talking about the temperature of light, of the light, the light bulb itself, the lumens, right? You know, it gets pretty, pretty nitty-gritty. Um, and that's something where we'd want to see, I think we'd want to see examples of and come to determination because, I mean, there are string, so, I mean, Christmas lights, like, we're, we're going down the road of saying people can't put Christmas lights on their, outside of their businesses and homes. So I-
Brian, I think if you took a ride by, you would see them. They're a little bit more, more intense than that. I mean,
But that's what, so that's what I'm saying. String lights, string lights are very generalized. That's why I'm saying we need to be very specific to the type of string light we want to, we want to talk about, right? So.
Right, so maybe, maybe you guys-
To, you know, drive by it, you can see what I'm talking about. I might be able to take a picture of it at some point, but you know, it's just, this is the first meeting I've had since I, since I've seen them. Um, you know, they didn't even get a sign permit, so I haven't real, really been able to talk to them yet. Um, but the, the, you know, if you see the lights, you'll, you'll know what I'm talking about. They're just, they're extremely bright. They're extremely, uh-
Could you ar- could you, could you argue that they are, um, they're an issue with, uh, traffic safety?
Yeah, I think they're, they're covered under E, not the traffic safety one. Can you read, can you see number E?
No, I can't get on that.
Traffic safety because they're off the road a little bit. Rose, I think they're really covered already under E. Do you want me to read that again?
No, I see, I can see it now. But, um, but why don't you guys take a ride by and let me know what you think, okay? Before I
Nope.
Do anything.
Okay. Martha, are you ready to let us know if you have anything? Last minute, look at your changes.
There was one thing, let me see if I can find it. I think it was, um,
I'm looking up that meeting where we changed that.
Yeah.
But I think we changed temporary or permanent or something because
Under.
it was clear what it meant on signs.
Yeah, so we're under signs, I think, still. Additional permanent signs. In addition to the allotted freestanding wall projecting soffit or awning signs on a premises, additional secondary signs for traffic flow and parking may be permitted, such signs shall not exceed two square feet. And all other additions apply. I don't know what is meant by additions.
Oh, additions.
Martha, what section is that?
Um, it's it's under wall-mounted signs, number five.
I think those are entrance.
Those are entrance and exit signs.
I don't know where we are.
Oh, I know. Remember we added-
I wasn't here for that meeting, so that's why I'm asking.
We added language to the end of that to clarify it.
But tell me what section and
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
because there's a lot of changes.
Here it is. Okay, so it's right before D, lighting, number five. Here it is. Okay, so it's right before D, lighting, number five, additional permanent signs. In addition to the allotted freestanding wall projecting soffit or awning signs on a premises, additional secondary signs for the traffic flow and parking may be permitted. Such signs shall not exceed two square feet, but all other, oh, it shouldn't be additions. It should be conditions, like all other sign, you know, conditions apply.
I remember when we did that, yes.
It's not the right word. It should be conditions.
Or maybe sign standards or.
Yeah, sign standards is better, yeah. Thanks, that's a good catch.
I was here for that one, I remember.
Yeah. Martha, do you have anything else?
Um, I'm trying to scroll through real quick.
There it is.
I did that January fourth.
Yeah, we did.
Some reason I can't get, I stopped sharing it and reshare it. That's not it.
Is it five forty point four? We made a change there.
I became tiny.
No, because that's where the change we made, we just combined the two last, prohibited signs.
Yep.
It wasn't about the flags of the nation. That's something we changed. Read about five forty point four.
Comments jumping out at me. So I guess I'm all set.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, motion for a public hearing. Can I have a motion and we'll have a discussion? So moved.
I can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay, I said, next on the agenda would be a motion for a public hearing and Judy made that motion and I'll second that. Discussion? And everybody understands we have to do another public hearing because Chris Callahan reviewed our whole thing and there were sections that we hadn't warned at our last public hearing. And what I learned about public hearings from Martha that I want to share with you guys is that if you think of anything in the public hearing that we haven't thought of, the time to bring it up is at the public hearing and we can make changes during the public hearing, just not after.
Okay.
Okay, which I wasn't aware of. So we could have done Chris Callahan's changes in the public hearing and gotten this done.
I think we have.
Well, I do.
Move forward, yeah.
I hate to bring it up because I don't think we resolved it. Did we ever resolve the flagpole issue last, from last meeting?
Yeah, we did. We said, we said we were going to go by government standards on that.
Okay, good.
I have it right here. Flags of the nation's state or branches of military in accordance with any size limitations by the federal government.
Good. It's just double checking. Didn't want to miss it.
It's good to double check. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, next on the agenda, next month's agenda planning, we're going to talk about meeting norms, municipal planning grants, the new one that we started, haven't started working on yet, the survey results, and setting goals for the year. Did anybody want to add anything else to our next agenda? Obviously, we have to have a public hearing. Do we want to have the public hearing and then tackle this agenda after it? Or do we want two separate meetings?
Either way, but I would, would say under setting goals, let's just, so we don't forget it, do flood plain.
Oh, yeah, the flood. Regulations.
Flood regulations.
Yeah, it's Article Six.
Because I do think that's important.
I guess I'll just say so as far as setting goals for the year, there may be new board members as well. And then also, I don't know if we're, if this board is supposed to be setting the goals or taking more direction from the select board and trustees. You know, I think we could come up with a list of priorities, but I think we should go back to the town and select board and say, we're, we need, we need to be aimed, I think. I don't know if we're like an autonomous board for the town as to where we're going. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know. I think.
We need to receive direction from the select board and trustees, I think.
Also, we're also working on a municipal planning grant, so we have to consider that too.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you. I think the boards need to talk to each other a lot more. So we know what everybody's.
Yeah, I mean, I feel we could come up with a list potentially of like priorities, but I don't, yeah, that's just, that's my two cents. I've just.
Maybe we should invite them to help us set our goals.
Sure, yeah.
I have that idea. I'll invite them officially. Okay, other business, any, oh, wait, let's set the, let's set the date for the public hearing.
Shoot, February is a really busy month.
Yeah, school vacations and stuff.
Well, it's not only that, but you know, anybody that's got a budget or whatever has to do a public hearing.
We got to have 15 days to warrant and it's the 23rd and we got to get it in the Vermont Journal. So we're, we have to go into February to do that. When's school vacation? Is that the 19th, which is President's Week?
Uh, yes. Oh, wait, I don't know.
Yeah, it is.
Our normal meeting day would be that Tuesday. Should we meet then for a public hearing? Because people may be out of town. I mean, we avoided Christmas week for that reason, I know. Do we want to meet on the 27th instead, which would be the second Tuesday, you know, the Tuesday after that instead of?
I cannot. I have the Ludlow Mount Holly annual meeting.
How about the Tuesday before the 13th? Do I have time to warn, Rose, if we went with Tuesday the 13th for our meeting date to avoid February school vacation and?
I, Terry, isn't the 20th our regular meeting, the third Tuesday?
Yeah, but that's, that's the President's Week. Is that when we want to meet for a public hearing?
Oh, because so many people are busy.
Because I know you guys wanted to avoid, avoid Christmas week.
Right.
There's no time to warn for the 13th? Because 15 days from now, but we got to get it in the Journal. Rose, is there time to warn? I mean, I got to fix all the paperwork, hopefully with the help of Martha.
Rose, you're muted.
Rose, is there time to warn for the 13th?
I have to, I have to look and look at the calendar and then try to look back at the dates and see if I can get in with Shante and stuff. So I'm not, I'm not really sure yet.
Okay.
Uh, Terry?
I can tell you tomorrow.
Can I add something, Terry, here?
Yeah.
Martha has lost her sound, so she can't hear us. And I'm, I'm, I know Martha knows this, but I'm not, I just want to remind you, there's, there's reporting responsibilities and you have to get all this stuff out to the other municipalities. So I wouldn't cut it too close.
Yeah, I did that last time. She helped me the first time, but it's a lot.
But Martha had done the report before. I just want to make sure that you touch base with her as well.
That makes sense.
I have my tongue back.
Oh, good. Should we try later in the week of the 12th? Like, could we do it on a Thursday? Thursday, the 15th? That should give us time to warn.
Is that not?
It's only adding two days.
Is that not the FOLA Film Festival day? I think Noah can answer that. I think that will be in here. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we should look at the town calendar too. Well, we can set that date. If I just know the days you guys are not available, if you could let me know that, I could set the date after that.
I think we should try for just our regular scheduled meeting.
What?
I think we should try for just our regular scheduled meeting.
Oh, you think we should do a President's Week?
I, I mean, President's Week isn't like Christmas when people go away and visit.
Okay, so I'll just.
Most people are in town.
Because if it's, if it's not the 20th, it sounds like we're going into March.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. Okay, so March 20th, everybody's available?
February 20th.
February 20th?
Yeah, because we have that, that's a regular meeting day anyway.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Is that okay with you, Martha? Can you hear, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I may be off that week, but probably someone, if I can't attend, maybe Ally or Jason could. I don't know.
Okay.
Jared?
So looking at the calendar, as far as warning in the Vermont Journal, if you warned tomorrow to get it in the following week, your earliest date would be the 15th. So there wouldn't be enough time for even the 20th.
Oh.
I mean, are you ready to warn tomorrow?
Um, I gotta, I gotta just add all the sections to the public hearing notice. Well, I got to warn everywhere by tomorrow. That, no, no, I just have to warn by the 15th.
The following week, the only day I can't do it is the 27th.
I'm gone.
And you're gone.
You're gone.
I leave on the 25th. I won't be back for a week.
Okay, I think we're gonna.
Notice the paper by tomorrow. You have an extra week to get anything else to work.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because we don't have to get all that out to the 5th.
That could potentially work. I don't want to speed for.
Yeah. So Rose and I, Rose, you'll touch base with Shante about warning for the 20th? Martha, will you help me with the paperwork tomorrow? Or can I, are we doing, can I send it to you to have you peruse it? The public meeting notice? I know I just got to add all those sections and stuff to the other one and change, change the dates. Okay, I'll do that. I got Lily. Hopefully, hopefully she'll cooperate. Okay, other business, any board member comments?
Well, just, just to get back, so we'll be good to get in the paper by tomorrow? Is that something you're doing personally or Rose and Jared?
Rose is checking with Shante.
So Rose is, can that be done tomorrow? Or?
I'll check with Shante. I mean, that's the best I can do.
Yeah, all right. So, okay, good.
Okay.
I mean, it's a tentative date then.
Yeah, it's a tentative date.
Can, can we?
Our regular meeting date.
Can we, just in case?
Get another one?
Do the following week and do a backup date?
Yeah.
Like I said, the only day I can't do is the 27th.
Okay, so a backup date.
So we got the 26th, the 28th, or the 29th.
I can do the 26th. I don't know what the town calendar says, though. Let me look at the town calendar.
I can do the 26th. I can't do the 28th or 29th.
Oh, wait, Ted, you're out of town, right?
Ted's out of town.
I forgot.
Yeah. How about later, the week of the 20th? Is there a date at the end of the week of the 20th, the 21st, 22nd, or 23rd? That people have some availability?
I'm fine that week.
Yeah, that week.
I'm fine.
20 seconds, good.
Jared, you got the town calendar up there? I'm looking it up unless you already got it pulled up.
That'll give you some wiggle room of a day or two.
Okay, the 21st. February. What's happening? Oh, yeah.
Is that at the senior center?
Yeah, it's just B R G N. What's that?
Black River Good Neighbors.
Okay, that's the Black River Good Neighbors. So we can do the 21st, 22nd, or 23rd. Anybody got a preference?
22nd.
22nd.
22nd. Okay, so that'll be our backup date. Okay, any other board comments?
Why don't we just make that the date?
Make that the date.
Yeah, I think that's a smarter idea.
Yeah, so that way we get a little bit more time to.
Yeah, and I don't have to get it to tomorrow. Any other board member comments? Citizen comments? Yes. Mr. Alden? Oh, we have somebody online?
We do.
I don't see any.
Can't leave without saying something. I just want to touch on, on your, your goals for next year. And, you know, Rose touched on a good one, flood hazard review. I know after the last six months, no one wants to talk about flood hazard any further, but it is something that needs to, to be updated. But I'd further add that you may want to, in addition to the select board and any other boards given input, you may want to ask the planning and zoning office for like a bullet list of, of items that bog things down, you know. There's been discussion over the past two years of how to streamline the process. And one thing that comes to mind, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, but one thing that comes to mind, having attended a lot of DRB meetings, is the need for, for letters from the police, fire, and ambulance. There's a lot of instances where those are valid, where they would need those, you know, in development. But there's a lot where it's not. For example, like a subdivision, there's no reason that I could see, understand that the police chief would need to weigh in on a subdivision. If it's just a subdivision, it's lines on a map. You know, another example is if someone is repairing their, their deck and it has to go through a flood hazard review. You know, like the police chief is not, he doesn't have to have any input. And then speaking to those, to the chief, especially the fire chief, they're really annoyed with doing those letters. So I agree that there's a lot of instances where those letters are required, if it's a development, if there's new construction. But applying them across the board really slows things down. And it's a reason a lot of DRB meetings get continued because folks don't have a letter from the ambulance, you know, it just happened last night. So I would ask the zoning and they could probably shoot a dozen things off the top of their head that, you know, the board should consider looking at to help streamline and make their job easier. Thank you.
Noah?
Kind of on that same vein that Eric was talking about, over the course of the past six months coming to some of these DRB meetings, it's, it's always a bummer when, when people are just trying to rebuild and they're waiting on a letter from the state or waiting on something. And I don't know, I found out last night that they're kind of at this, this ad hoc judicial kind of position, but I don't know if there's any flexibility. And I don't know if it comes from you guys or the select board, but allowing some of this stuff to get streamlined when people are just trying to get back into their, get back into their homes. And some of the stuff seems to be a bureaucratic thing. And you know, obviously, there's, there's certain rules and zoning is, is super important. But when people are just trying to get, get things back going, it seems like it could be streamlined a little bit. But yeah, there's plenty on your plate. So just some thoughts.
Well, it seems, it seems to me maybe what we need to do is ask the DRB what things they feel need to have streamlining.
Good idea. Let's invite them. We're going to have a crowd, you hope.
Well, we can invite them or we can ask them just to send us input.
Yeah, okay.
I would do both because not everybody wants to go.
Yeah, go ahead, Rose.
Isn't this, what we're talking about right now doesn't have anything to do with this going on right now. I mean, ambulance, fire, police, that doesn't have anything to do with this part of zoning, I'm sorry to say. This has to do with the DRB's section of the zoning and not the planning commission. The DRB request these things and they do it for a reason. And it has been going on for a while. Also, when there's a subdivision that's land development that is creating housing, housing sometimes catches on fire, sometimes requires an ambulance, and sometimes requires a police officer. And at these times, if these people are not notified of these areas being. And at these times, if these people are not notified of these areas being developed, then they're not aware of what's going on and yes, they do want to know. And they may be annoyed by the letters at some points because, but they always have something to say about the developments when they're going on, when they stop in to the offices. So, it's been going on for a very long time, they are required, and I do not see that changing. They're always, fire, ambulance, and police are always required to submit a letter during a DRB hearing. We don't ask for school letters anymore, we don't ask for electrical letters anymore, and we don't ask for a lot of other letters. Fire marshal's always required when it comes to commercial and there are certain letters that are always required because those are, those are the things that are required when you're doing a development. Flood hazard review is always required to have a letter from the Agency of Natural Resources, the flood hazard manager, that is a requirement. And we, and it's in Section 6 of our zoning document. You know, we can't, if these, if the people that have to get a permit to do a do, a development and they can't seem to get their letters together, they have plenty of time to do that, we give them plenty of time, we give them plenty of instructions to do that, and sometimes it seems like they can't seem to do that. Other times, people, they glide right along and they get all their documents in one swoop and they go right through the process. Other times, people don't.
I, just a second, Brendan or Martha, did you want to say anything or Chris? Did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. Eric?
So I'm talking about two different things, specifically, when I mentioned a subdivision plan, Rose mentioned development, I never mentioned development. Development is, needs those letters, I agree. And I actually did say that. In my example, if you're doing a subdivision, merely a subdivision, lines, moving lines on a piece of paper, none of that applies. There is no development, there is no house being built, there is no risk of fire, there is no need for an ambulance, there is no need for police. I agree with everything Rose says, if there's a development, absolutely, absolutely agree. What I'm trying to say is streamline some of the process. When you look at and say, okay, this is merely a subdivision, this is one example, this is merely a subdivision, there's no permit for a house. Once a permit for a construction happens, you need those letters, otherwise, you know, I don't know why you would need them.
I would think though, with the subdivision, you would be talking about traffic flow and, you know, being able to get the ambulance to where you're dividing it, I can see where, in my personal opinion.
I think what Rose is trying to say is, it's not in our wheelhouse to be looking at that. It's in the DRB's, is that correct, Rose? Rose has got her hand up.
So, Rose, can you elaborate? Who, who would be responsible for addressing any changes to this if there were to be?
The DRB, and I mean, why would, I just, I think it's, I just hate to, you know, say anything against.
That's fine, we just, I just watch.
If you, if you're subdividing, you're obviously considering development, especially if you have sewer allocation in front of you, but it would be the DRB, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think I'll just say a motion to adjourn. Oh, Jared?
Sorry, I just, I just want to revisit the, the rope lights just for a second here before we adjourn. So, I just wanted to make two quick points. Those rope lights are very analogous to neon lights, that, that, they're brighter, they're, they attract much more attention. So that would basically fall under 540.4, Section D, neon signs, light box signs, things like that. But also to Ryan's point, a lot of them can, you can hit the button and they can make patterns which can also be distracting to drivers. So they're meant to grab attention. They're a little, they're not so much, they're just above that threshold of a Christmas light, sometimes they get the little icicles falling, but, you know, those are much finer points of light. These rope lights are just much more magnetism.
Yeah, I'm going to go take a look at them right now, but I'll just say this, but if, so if they put them behind the glass of the front windows of the building, they're fine.
Technically.
Yep, so I think, yeah, there's.
So we might look into that in the future too.
Yeah, when they're oscillating on the building, it's huge. Yeah, thank you, Jared. Thank you for the citizen participation, I appreciate it. Does somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The old man put the angel on.